All right. I want to call the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission. If we'd all rise please and raise our, or give our respects with flag.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being just for all.
Thank you, everybody. Susan, if you would note the role in that Mr. Hunwick is not here tonight?
Yes, it is noted that there is a quorum.
Thank you. I need approval of the, uh, the agenda for this evening, if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from the planning commission regular meeting of August 25th, 2022.
You doing minutes or the agenda?
No, no, I'm doing the, I'm trying to get the agenda.
I'm sorry, I jumped down the, my bad.
You can do the other one.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman approves the agenda for tonight's meeting, September 22nd, 2022.
I will support that.
I have a motion by Mr. Nold and support from Mr. Spiz, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now we're looking for.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the planning commission regular meeting of August 25th, 2022.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of 8:25, 22 from Mr. Spiz, and supported by Mr. Nold, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're on to our public comment for items that are not regularly scheduled for this evening, and I don't really see too many people in the audience that might want to make that comment. Is there anyone here that does want to talk? Outside, okay, seeing none, we'll move on to commissioners' comments. Do I have any comments from any commissioners at this time?
No, sir.
Mr. Nold, you have a comment?
Yes, I have a very brief. At our last board meeting, uh, it was brought up that we're on a conservative effort with paper. So, I'd like to suggest that we all be conscious of the paper that we print within the office and the paper that we use in our everyday activities. For the township.
My paper is a flash drive, I mean, you can't get much more conservative than that, I don't think. That's all I have. Okay, well, I do have a hard copy of the agenda. That's a good comment, who, that's through the township, that's you? That's you included, Mr. Spiz?
I guess so.
Okay. Just trying to make sure everybody's on, do, we don't get much paper.
Well, somebody does.
Well, okay, uh, I'll talk about that later. I got, I got the comment, I got the comment. Uh, we have, we have no public hearings this evening, we have unfinished business, technically, none, for this evening, so we're going to go right into new business, and I think we have some petitioners here for that. And did you, I want to ask a question before we start, uh, and you'll need to come up to the podium, but, um, or a representative would. Did you get a copy of the, uh, Carlisle Wortman summary of this site plan? Not yet. You do not, so you have not seen it. So I will read a few things out of that when we get started, but, um, you as the petitioner, I would like you to start and explain what you're trying to accomplish in Oxford, and we'll go from there.
This is, I'm Greg Lotzenheiser with L. and A. Architects. We're the architects for the project. I brought some boards, but it looks like you might be putting stuff up on the screen, or no?
I'm trying to get to it right now, I'm sorry, I'm just a little slow here.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'll be there in one second.
I brought paper, so sorry.
Okay, I hear you.
Old fashioned, try to be prepared, you know?
I got to downsize some stuff.
It's like the corner of the site plan, there you go.
I got to downsize some stuff here to start putting stuff on screen. This is our Taco Bell site.
Correct.
And then we'll go from that, and we'll go right into, uh, this is the site where, I mean, I'll let you start, and I'll kind of follow with you.
Yeah, this is the site on the outlot of the Myers pad next to the Chase bank there. You can kind of skip to the slides.
And I think what was important is, this is kind of like, like the perimeter part of your site.
That is correct.
When you follow this line, because that was what we were, uh, talking about, that we would need a legal description of a land division for that property as an outlot.
Right.
And have you applied for that yet?
We have not applied for that to my knowledge.
Waiting for preliminary?
Yeah, because we want to make sure that lines aren't going to change.
Right.
Before we split it and make it a tax idea.
Thank you, Mr. Spiz.
Our goal was to carve out the, the acre of land provided, uh, on the site to make everything work as best we could.
Yeah, approximately above.
Yeah, approximately an acre plus or minus, and, and we think after a meeting with the, uh, the township and everybody, that we've, we've developed a pretty good plan, and we've made some revisions along the way to achieve that. So, really, we're here tonight to, uh, answer any questions. We do have the engineer's review, that, uh, we did revise the plan. Mike did most all, all the revisions, except for a couple of minor things. And when I resubmitted it through, I know it has to go back through the engineers before y'all can see it again, and I don't know if you've seen that, that revised plan or not.
Um, we, a quick comment, but, uh, because we're, we don't have Zach here, who we would normally start with first, prior to the engineering, but, um.
You were in September 1st? Were you in September 1st? This is what the source.
September 1st is the.
The worst and greatest.
They resubmitted plans to address some of these comments.
Right.
And they resubmitted them directly to us.
Right.
Which we don't comment on, it has to go through Cheryl, and then get into your packet, so it only came back a couple of days ago, I'll say, or last, on Friday.
It was a week, we had to go, we resubmitted.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, which is further on down the line, I don't know, we want to go to that right now. Okay, this is your, this is pretty much your proposed layout for that property description.
This is correct, yes.
So, at this point in time, what I'm going to try and do, instead of going into any of the other components of landscape and floor plan and all that, I'm going to take us into, uh, Zach here, so just give me a quick second. And what is his, where's he at, I had to write it down. It should have worked, what happened?
I have a hard copy, if you need to use it.
No, I got it, it should be right here. Oh, I gotta blow this up a little bit, that's too small. All right, where'd it go on me? Okay. This was, uh, our letter that we had from Carlisle Wortman Group, which was Zach Michel that wrote this. That's why I was asking if you had seen it, but, uh, when we kind of work our way down through it, he just talks about the property description and where it's located, and then he tells us, you know, where you're going to be part of the outlot right off of Market Street as you come in past the Chase bank, and the natural resources and stuff. And then when we get into the actual area width and height setbacks, you can see that he concluded, we're going to have our acre, we're going to have our footage, and everything follows and complies on the yes column line. So that part is all good from his, um, point of view. Because we're doing a shared, uh, access through the Myers parking lot, uh, we don't have anything to work with, uh, MDOT that way off M24, that's all concluded in his report. Uh, we're talking about, we have a safety path, uh, which will be, it says right here, a proposed sidewalk to provide that accordingly to the proposed building. Um, we do, he does defer some things to the fire chief, which we have his letter here yet, that we'll bring up this evening. Um, parking, it has met all the criteria of parking for the site. Uh, one thing that I do want to address, um, just because I remember reading it, and I don't know if I have it in here exactly in the right location, I think we're a couple pages off on it or something yet. Uh, maybe one more page, it's in. Uh, it talked about, this preliminary site plan does not include any approval of any signage for this site. So that would all come when you bring in your final site plan to deal with signage and stuff like that. He pointed that out in the letter too, but you said you didn't have a copy of it yet. There was a concern that, um, someone had, uh, a concern that they addressed with Mr. Michel about the type of trees and plantings on the site, and what is more suitable on the site, but he had a landscape person from their firm look at it, and wrote a email to us in regards to it, because there was a concern about the type of, uh, trees that you had, um, that were good for growth in sand, but for other reasons weren't the best selection of tree type. So I won't get into that yet, because that's really not part of the, we aren't final site plan yet with landscaping either, and you haven't had time to look at the letter. Lighting is okay, this is where the signage was mentioned, right here, this site plan. When it says such details in the area are not included in preliminary site plan, when you read that last part right there. And, um, I knew it was in there somewhere, I just couldn't remember. It's a fast food restaurant, which we all know. The outdoor patio was discussed in this letter, and, uh, the review comments, and then we get down to a summary. Um, he said it appears to be generally complete, except as otherwise noted in the report. Um, the approval without, with conditions, as is determined, decision criteria and developed standards are met and would be met with conditions. That's what we're here for this evening, to talk about those. And then any questions and consideration we have, he has the, uh, determination of the findings of fact for this site, which he's listed one through eight. We're not going to read them all at this particular moment. Um, and then we have the, uh, potential conditions of, of modifications if, if necessary. And that's his letter, and that's the one he signed, and that was dated. Oh gosh, I should have looked in the beginning.
September 12th.
Thank you, September 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I have a paper copy of it, would you like me to give this to the applicant?
Well, yeah, sure, if it's just a copy that we can submit, we'll have it now.
Don't tell that I had paper.
Oh, gosh.
You don't want any word.
We won't even make, we won't even make a copy, we'll just.
Susan, would you like to give another one, I want to get rid of evidence.
Get rid of the hard copies. So technically, we kind of went through it quickly, but, uh, because of the preliminary, uh, activity that's happening tonight, and I talked to Zach about it personally, um, we had no problem with what we were going to do, just to read into the record. And now you do have a copy, so you can kind of work from that for your, uh, conditions of concern that we may have, or any questions the planning commission may have. But really, um, the, I have a, a pretty lengthy letter from Mr. Sharp, not lengthy, but a lot of concerns from the engineering components. And maybe, Mr. Sharp, you might want to get up and comment at this time, we'll do it that way.
Yeah, just so everybody's clear, um, you know, what happens when the applicants submit these plans, um, they're distributed to us through Cheryl, and the, you know, and the planning and zoning department there. We're given a deadline to have our comments back, which is generally a week before she has to have the packets out, um, to you. So then, oftentimes, the applicants will try to address those comments, landscape plans, or whatever, some sort of revisions, and submit them directly back to myself, or Zach, or the chief. And we, uh, we'll look them over, just to see, you know, okay, yeah, we see what they're trying to do, but we won't comment on them, because it's not fair to you, because then we're commenting on things, on plans, that you don't have in your packet, so that's the reason, um, why there were some things going on there. Um, but anyway, you should be in, uh, receipt of our letter, which is dated September 12th, with regards to this project here. Um, I'll hit a couple of the, the high points on it. Um, one of them that continues, that kind of comes up is, you know, at one point in time Meyer had a site plan. And I believe that by putting this, you know, by taking out an acre of their property, that Meyer is required to submit an amended site plan. Again, that is more Zach's bailiwick, so I am not 100% sure on how that process occurs. Um, it was mentioned at the pre-application meeting, um, with, with the applicant here, and I don't know where that stands. So, for you to approve the Taco Bell, maybe that's okay for you to go ahead and do that. But at some point in time, I would think that Meyer would have to come in with an amended site plan.
And that's your, that's your, kind of like your comment right here.
Comment number six.
Yep.
Comment number six, so, again. Um, with regards to the site grading, um, yep, they've provided some, some grading on there, we have no problem with that. With regards to the sanitary sewer, there is an existing sewer that runs through the Meyer parking lot, um, that has adequate capacity to service this development. Uh, there will have to be an easement, because they are crossing the Meyer property, but nothing that can't be overcome there. Uh, with regards to the water distribution, um, they are not, uh, proposing any new water main on their site. They're connecting to an existing 16-inch line that is on, in M24, so they'll need some permits from MDOT for that. With regards to the storm sewer, the stormwater detention was previously approved as part of the overall Meyer development, and it drains to the south, and then underneath M24. So there isn't any additional, um, stormwater detention basins, or underground detention that's required. So all of their stormwater requirements, um, have been, you know, will be fulfilled, other than a couple catch basins that they have to put on their property to collect their, their site water. With regards to the pavements, the sidewalks and curbing there, again, just a couple of items. The dumpster pad, on the plan that you see, encroaches into a storm sewer easement that is on the property. Again, the applicant did submit something to me personally, um, that shows that it can be moved outside of that, but based on what you have in your packet, it falls within that easement and needs to be relocated. Um, but I believe that they will be able to accommodate that. Uh, the access to the site, and I think Zach also comments on it, it's a little, there's three points of access, and I do have some concern with the access where the Chase bank is, and, uh, along with the letter, Tom, there's a red line markup in there, I don't know if you could.
Further down, it's here.
If you could go to that.
I have it on here, I just, it'll take me a second to get to it. Sometimes it moves a little slower than, it's right in, starts about here.
Yeah, like right in there, so right behind the dumpster, if you can see where that is.
Right here.
Chase bank, because of the way that the road.
This part right here.
Currently exists around Meyer, it is perpendicular to the current road, but because they're realigning that, it's just going to create a larger area of, um, pavement, I guess it would be. So it would seem that, you know, we usually like our roads and our driveways to be 90 degrees to each other, instead of having, um, angles. So there, behind that dumpster, we were just suggesting that maybe they, um, fill some of that in with some landscaping, and basically re-align the Chase bank, uh, driveway to come out more to a 90-degree angle to what will be their relocated, uh.
That's why you do that rectangular, that little triangular component there.
Correct, correct. And it just seems like flow would be a little bit better in there, again, uh, hours of operations and things, I mean, I know that all comes into play, but it just seemed like there is an expanse of, uh, asphalt behind that dumpster, where people could be coming out of the Chase bank, coming into the Taco Bell, and there could be some conflicts in there. But again, that's more for your, um, you know, for your opinions, I guess, on that. So we had comments on that, uh, same thing with the perimeter road, they're relocating the perimeter road, so obviously we need to see more detailed plans on that.
There's another plan for it, I think, right here. Is this it?
Right, so right now, the, the road comes down kind of through the dumpster pad, and through the building, and sweeps back around, so obviously they're squaring it off a little bit more. So there would just need to be some additional, uh, design work that is done for that, and whether that's on the Taco Bell plan, or an amended Meyer site plan, I'm not quite sure. But, again, it will need to be addressed by somebody in some fashion on that. They are showing an eight-foot wide asphalt safety path, which, right now, is a safety path to nowhere, but.
Here it is.
If Meyer makes an amendment to their site plan, maybe we have Meyer put the safety path in there, and the next thing you know, we got a safety path all the, I don't know. But again, um, it is shown on the plan, it is a requirement, and, um, I have no objections to, to what they're doing. I believe Zach asked to have it pushed out into the right of way. So again, that is a decision by the applicant as to where he wants to put it. If he wants to put it in easement on their property, or out in the right of way, doesn't matter, as long as it's shown on the plan and it's constructed. And, again, just, we don't really touch on the landscape much, we leave that up to Zach, but again, they are proposing to take down the berm that protects, you know, the visibility, I guess you'd say, from M24 to Meyer. And again, I don't, don't think that there's anything wrong with that, it's just the Meyer site plan, again, was that berm and those trees and so forth a part of the original Meyer site plan, and how does it affect that? So, but, um, overall, with regards to what they've shown, there isn't anything engineering-wise that can't be overcome here, it's just working out the details, so we are recommending approval of the preliminary site plan. And, um, you know, they'll be able to work through this stuff through the next, through the final site plan and the engineering phases.
So there's, you know, there's one component that I, and, and thank you very much, Jim, for your comments.
Any questions? Right now?
Do you have any questions, anybody, for Mr. Sharp?
Thank you.
I have one question.
Oh.
Um, behind that, that area you talked so much about, behind the dumpster, that's not their property, is that correct?
None of it's their property right now, they can create.
Yeah, where you were going to draw that.
They can create the property however they want, because they got to carve it out. Anyway.
But they're also making changes to the Meyer property anyway, for those. If you go up, Tom, go up.
Sure. Right in here.
Yeah, see those five.
Islands?
One, those right there.
So, those are none of their property.
So, is it fair to, who's, are you folks Taco Bell redoing that entire parking lot with those islands?
Five islands there, but that one off to the left. As well as we're looking at the drawing that funny.
This one?
L-shaped one?
This left?
Here, the left of the drawing, as you look at it, it's sort of an, a backwards L sort of a shaped island.
J.
On the north, here you go, J.
Yeah.
That island is, is a rebuilt too, because the, the road doesn't run that way.
Here and here.
Yes.
Okay.
Now that's, that's going to have to be redone.
You still got another question?
Yes, sir. The, uh, area there looks like Chase has to change theirs, is that the responsibility?
Uh, you mean over here?
Correct.
Well, I think it's going to include, basically, because we're modifying the actual original site plan for Myers also. So it's part of the component of Myers and their agreement, and what they need for property, and how they have to make this work, in regards to how people can freely get in and out of here safely, ingress and egress, I think this is both.
That is, that is both ingress and egress, that access is, right now it comes.
What he's trying to say is he'd like to get this portion of it kind of coming in, and a little, maybe a little more curve right here, I don't know. But something to work to where this portion then has a little more green belt right behind the dumpster, when you look at it down here. Because right now, you just got that one row of, uh, well, what, I don't even know if those are deciduous or not, right there. But, no, they're not, so, because.
Otherwise, the roadway will appear, because they're not, if they don't modify.
Right.
The Chase bank lot, the, it'll kind of follow the existing roadway, and it'll want to kind of take people into the back of that dumpster. I mean, it's a larger, it's a big expanse, again.
I think you're trying to get this to extend a little bit more, and then curve around into it.
Correct.
Right, and they're taking out some of the curve to the Chase side, so, my question was, is that Chase's responsibility, or?
No, because I think Chase has their own plan, when they modified and became part of an outlot of Myers, and so really, it boils down to Taco Bell through Myers.
Okay.
In my opinion, to get this, what, what Mr. Sharp stated was that he didn't see anything that couldn't be worked out. He said there's conditions that need to be looked at, and, and, and the responsibility of Taco Bell with Myers to work them out is theirs, but there wasn't anything he didn't think couldn't be worked out. So that was good for me to hear, because this is preliminary site plan. So what we're trying to do tonight is get this approved preliminarily, to take care of these concerns, to come back with a site plan.
I'm just, if you look right above there, Ty, right above the red writing.
Oh, right above it?
Believe it right where it was. You can see that you got the arrows of the new driveway that are going in each direction, plus then you've got the ingress and egress coming out of there, and it just seems like there could be conflict in that area because of where the order boards are, that there's not a lot of stacking there, and if so, you get three cars maybe, any more than three cars, you could get people stacking out into the actual new Meyer circular driveway, where.
Well, if someone's coming in a vehicle on this side, and then all of a sudden they want to turn and go that way, that's, that's part of trying to manage it. It's easy to come out this way and turn and go this way. But it's the opposite when you try to go northbound. So, I, I, I think we can work it out, I think so.
Again, I, I 100% agree, and maybe I'm overthinking it, but normally, when we do our driveways, we do it just like the other side, where we have 90-degree angles to the existing driveways, roadways, whatever they are over there on, on the other two sides, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Yep.
Unless anyone else has any other comments. You know, I, I did forget something a little earlier, and I want to put it back into the record. I'm going to get to it real quick. And it was, I got a little ahead of myself, and that's what my brain does sometimes to me. Uh, where was it at? Okay. The, uh, the Kelly Firm is a new, uh, firm that we have right now, uh, representing the township as the attorneys. And, uh, they did write this letter, and it's dated September 12th, too, I think all the letters are September 12ths. And, uh, they had a few concerns, and it was about two pages long. And this is the, you guys have not seen this letter from the attorney, see, everything came so quickly. To get you guys on this agenda, we had very minimal, uh, turnaround time to get these packets together accordingly. Because with, by law, we have to have so much time, but, forget that part. So, um, you know, they had a few concerns in their, uh, report that they put together, but they, they did say that, that to move to grant preliminary site plan approval, uh, doesn't seem to be a problem. So, everything looks like it can be worked out within the regards of what their concerns were too. And a couple of them are related to the, uh, the legal interest part of the property, and what is Myers, and what is the sole owner of this property. So that's got to be all done through a legal description and engineering and whatnot. So, I just wanted you guys to know, we did have a letter from the, uh, attorneys also, and then we have, um, I'm trying to find you, chief, I'll find you in one second here.
Further down.
Ah, he's quite a bit further down, just let me move over a little bit. I think he's right about here. So we do have Oxford Fire Department letter.
Okay, um, yeah, real brief again, it's the normal part about the address and the Knox box, but the key highlighted part there is about, as far as water source on that property. So if you can now flip back to a drawing.
Uh, let me go to, um.
Even the one with the landscape one was fine.
Yeah, let me, let me get, let me get there real, hang on. I think it was about, I'll guess right now, I'm going to guess, okay. Should be right about. Oh, this is all into, uh, him, I want to go one more into the engineering document. Uh, jeez, oh, Pete, where are you at? All right, let me go the other way, it should be right after you. Yeah, here it is. So you want me to go down to one of their plans, right? It'll take me a second to get there. You want to use this one, or do you want to?
Keep going, keep going.
Go to the next one? This one better, or?
Yeah, keep going, keep going.
Keep going, okay, I want to know which one you want, right here?
Keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah, there's one that's got green landscaping.
Yeah, the green landscape one is easier to see.
All right.
Okay, all right. The current hydrant is over there, or the closest one, I should say, is in the Chase parking lot over there, basically to the, close to the front entrance of the building.
Yeah, the previous one had, shows exactly where it is.
Okay. So again, if, if that was the hydrant we were going to use.
It was right up here, wasn't it?
There you go.
Yeah.
So if we're, if we're using that hydrant, then technically, we would have to pretty much pull into Chase parking lot, hook up to the hydrant, do everything, and then drag all of our hoses and everything across, you know, through the parking lot, over the, the grass area, landscape area, to get into that, you know, to that area to do anything. Um, the hydrants out on 24, again.
Too far away.
Are too far away, and again, we'd be humping hose, you know, out through the ditch and everything like that. So, our preference would be as if there was a hydrant in the island over there to the north.
It should be like this island?
That island, and actually down on the, right, about, anywhere's down in that area.
Somewhere in here. So when you pull in this way, you can attach to it quickly, and it's still, okay.
Right.
So somewhere under there, but we could work that out engineering-wise, right, Jim?
Because if they're to bring their, again, if they make their tap out there, and bring the, um, 6-inch onto the property.
8-inch.
8-inch, okay, onto the property right there, about where your cursor is right there, leave a hydrant there.
Yeah.
And then they could run their tap for the water coming off the, you know, for the domestic off at that point, and going over to the building at that point.
Can you scroll down just a touch, Tom?
Sure.
So you can see, that's exactly what Chase Bank did, is they went out there and they tapped that 16-inch water main.
And brought it straight in.
And they did it with the tapping sleeve, and then they ran their hydrant up, so you could do the same thing here, you could tap that 16-inch and run a hydrant straight up.
And then they conduct their domestic to it at, at that point, which would be closer to the building for them there.
Yeah. That can be worked out, right, Jim, that's not a problem, yeah.
On the other drawings, when you go back through it, it shows their water service proposed coming in towards the back of their building anyhow, so again, it would be easier, closer to them coming in.
You want to go this way?
And you like it on the north line, or close to the north property line?
He'd like it more, he'd like it more in here.
Right in the, yeah, right in that island.
When you say here, I can't see what you're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
There's a little X right there.
I got a little cursor here, that's kind of.
There you go, right there, see?
Want to be your laser pointer?
Yeah, there you go.
Yes, all right, yep, got it, got it, I understand.
Good job.
Yeah, right.
Way to go, Justin.
But otherwise, that, that would take care of it for us, and otherwise, we're good with, uh, with the rest of it.
Okay, so you're good.
Circulation is fine, moving in and out, again, we can get in from the other entrance, and even coming if we come on that entrance there from the north, we can still make the loop through, so, we're good.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Phillips, thanks, thanks a lot. Do we have any concerns right now from any commissioners that they want to make comment to? Justin, Mr. Spiz, anybody down here, Mr. Noel? You want to talk about, uh, anything yet with, uh, direction of traffic, or?
Well, that's, yes, and I, can you go back to, just go back to the green one?
Which one do you want me to get?
The green one.
Okay, that's this way.
Right.
Okay.
There's three entrances to this, and I'm just concerned, throw that out, most of the Taco Bells I've seen have two. We have the, on the east side, we have that one entrance that's a little bit not standard to what I've seen Taco Bells. Um, that's the first issue. The second issue is, can you go up another one to get to the islands?
Uh, I'll try to go in any.
Oh, you've got islands there.
I do, but I don't know if that's, you want them right here?
No, I wanna go up a little bit more.
You wanna go to this guy?
Uh, we can use that.
I can go up another one.
Go up another.
I'll do whatever you feel comfortable with.
Go back down.
I'll go back down.
I'm sorry. No paper now.
Okay, we're doing, we're good.
So when we, on the west side, you've got two entrances and when they go down just a little bit to get those islands down.
Oh, you want me to?
Right. I'm concerned amount of openings in those islands with the Myers parking. If that is gonna be obstruction for cars coming and going, I see you're gonna have a little bit more traffic.
So the islands across the top, they just line up with the existing rows of Mike Myers parking lot. So we're taking islands, we're just sliding them over. Um, the road, as he said, it used to come kinda kitty corner right through our property and come around. So we just.
Correct.
Went around it. We're gonna tear out an island over here on this other end and build that new J shaped island for lack of a better.
Whatever you want.
Term of it. Yeah.
Big teardrop.
I mean, that was our idea and then, and of course then there's that great big island, we're gonna put in between, if you will, Myers parking lot and us.
Well, we're gonna get to that in a minute.
Sure.
So, so the one, two, three, four, the five islands on top, I'm just concerned about Myers traffic, Taco traffic, Taco Bell traffic and the Banks traffic. If there any thought needs to be about making those, one of those islands longer, but I know those are gateways for parking for Myers. That's just a concern I have. Then we get over to the north side. That large open area between the last, uh, island.
Maybe this is you, you're talking about here?
Yeah, no, down, down, left, 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 here.
From the J to the top to the far left.
This area right here. One of the drawings I saw, those are parking spots or potential parking spots right there.
Yeah.
There's not, there's not a barrier between the drive and those parking spots.
Go, go down.
Even more.
Go down to the next one.
Down or up?
Keep going, keep going. That shows the parking spots.
Pull, pull the drawings the other way. Keep, keep scrolling like this. We'll get to the existing survey and then we can.
Right there, right there. So we have.
He's talking about right through here.
Exactly. We don't have what I perceive as a barrier where people can back out into that quote drive as it goes around.
He's thinking this guy can back right into the drive. If he's parked or he's.
Is that a concern?
I mean, they back into the drives and the entire parking lot, but I, I understand what you're trying to say. So this, this is an is, this is a road.
Yes.
Like this and we're, we're tearing this up, we're running this through.
As that area grows, that is going to be more of a driving road to get through the east side of the parking lot. And I'm just concerned if we don't have it barriered off. That cars are gonna back into that quote road.
So I suppose the other thing we can do is, is we can turn this road like that. And, and have it run down here and have a curb and that can be a one, you know, make this a ninety degree. I mean, all of this is kind of a, a work in progress.
We're just talking, right. We're talking.
Trying to, yeah, so, you know, that's.
And you would squeeze this teardrop right here?
I could take this road, right, and run it right down our property. That becomes a ninety degree there. This becomes a ninety, it doesn't do that swoop. Swoopy flow thing like the old road did, but it could be made to function like that. And I suppose if we did that, we don't probably even have to. Tear out this island.
Now, if I'm coming from the north, I like this entrance point.
Yeah.
Cause it just brings you right straight into the place.
Can I have a make a comment real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things, as I'm looking at the existing of how they have it.
Uh, now, you mean?
Right, right this minute. The way they, the way the islands are set up, it's set up so that you have to follow the road and you can't drive right into the parking lot. You kinda have to stop and you gotta make, you gotta make some, at least slow down and make some turns. With this and what you're saying is, they can just drive straight into the parking lot. So if you kinda look the way the islands are specifically made is you have to slow down and you have to make, uh, maybe a right turn or a left turn. And in this case, you can go straight into the parking lot, not down the aisles. So yes, I would agree that those, those islands would have to be adjusted so that. The flow of tra- traffic would go around the street instead of straight into the parking lot. If, if that makes sense from.
Drive lanes, they don't back out onto the access.
See, the kinda stuff I look at is, see this little opening right here? Can you guys see my cursor? That means a person from this parking lot could just drive straight into here.
Yep.
They can just drive straight across the drive and.
That was my first comment.
I think this should be extended as a closure right here so that where you have this drive, you can't just come from the parking lot and drive straight in. I'm, I'm nervous. I'm just. Trying to draw.
You don't think just stop signs there are adequate?
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, I, I drive through there often, cause I'm in the community driving around. And, and believe it or not, people go cruising across that parking lot at angles and everything else. They don't, they don't pay attention. They don't pay attention to parking stop signs. So anyway, I, I just want John's, John's interest is part of my interest too. I think, you know.
There's two parts. Those four, those five islands need, maybe one or two need to be combined, the direct traffic and then the corner there, which we just talked about.
Well, especially from an entrance point. I don't like that one that way. But that's just some safety factors. I don't know. We can get some other comments. I don't know engineering. I am not a traffic management expert, so.
Can we scroll one more just so I can look at the existing?
You up or down?
Make the drawings move like this.
Okay.
So that's what the islands are now.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, so you see, like.
No, no car can directly back into or.
Drive about, drive from this road into a parking space.
Right.
Well, here's another dilemma though. If you do it with the five that you have and you connect them, if it's. A busy day, if somebody's driving down this lane and all the cars are parked, there's nowhere for them to turn around, you have to back down to get out. There has to be an exit.
I don't want them all closed off. I just wanted to make sure that maybe where one could be driven straight across right into the drive, people won't pay attention. I want.
I think John's comment of just, I think leaving the one open, uh, has shown, because those are all drive lanes.
Yeah.
So you can keep those open. And I think just John's comment about maybe. Curving that one island around to shake the road a little more and not allowing those.
Right here.
Little more defined up in this area where there's no.
Well, especially right there.
What about just extending that island and eliminating those eight or ten parking spots?
You mean take this forward?
Make that whole thing a berm.
Exactly, yes.
And then it would resolve it?
Cause then nobody would be parking there or backing into it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that move. If Myers is.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is, of course, we wanna preserve as many Meyer parking spaces.
I'm with you, man.
Uh, there's a lot of that parking lot that's not used.
I will say one thing under the development of what we're doing. The planning commission has the authority to address the number of parking spaces if they're not completely met or not. They can alter that. They have the ability to do that. Whether that works for Myers and yourself, that's a different issue. The planning commission does have the ability to.
Gotcha.
Alter parking spaces that are required.
Understand. Thank you.
If they feel necessary. So that, I think you've heard what the planning commission is starting to ask for. And it's obviously a lot of new stuff that you haven't even seen yet.
Yep.
Because we couldn't get the reviews done in a timely manner because we didn't have enough time.
Well, we're standing here. Can we talk about that, this upper corner a little bit more, just like we were just?
The one that's right here, behind the dumpsters? You want a different view than this?
No, this is okay, cause it shows what his idea is. What we, what we wanna try to do, if at all possible. Is not interfere any more than we have to with Chase Bank, cause we actually, we have to start tearing up and getting into their property. Like they have to get their permission. And they can just say no. So what we wanna do is figure out something that works. Without changing their driveway too much. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna play with it, but I think where he's got it squared off.
He just drew it square, but he doesn't.
Yeah, because they, they already drive out like this.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna try to figure out a way to make that sort of. I don't, I don't know. I'll play with it and I'll send it to John.
I think to everybody, what we're talking about here, that is a large, uh, amount of asphalt area and it's not real clear and cars could get confused.
About where to go.
About where to go. So maybe, you know, squaring it off is, is a, is a concept or suggestion. Maybe we do something that's, that's some kind of a curved landscaped area that, that channels the traffic in a way that alleviates that large open area.
Okay, so you're on the right track. You're trying to work something out.
And we'll make this ninety. I li- I like that idea of making that a ninety angle.
Yeah, the, the other thing, and we talked to our client earlier before this meeting is, there was a comment made also, we should talk about this as well. Is this drive not being an in and out, but only an egress. And our client was, uh, not supportive of that at all because that, he felt that's gonna be our, uh, one of the main entrances into the site for the drive through reasons. Um, that being said, let me address the drive through, even though it's a, a double drive through is shown. It doesn't function right now like a McDonald's double drive through does, okay? The outside lane has a menu board.
Now, when you call the outside lane, I think you're referring.
That one, yes. The, the inside lane, at this point in time, does not have a menu board. There's a speaker board there and that is for, uh, cars that call in on their mobile app. They pull into that and then they, they take precedence over cars in the drive through. It's a little different than how a drive through works at McDonald's and some other facilities. That, that's not to say that could change in the future because we're gonna put in a foundation for a future menu board on that lane. So that was kind of our client's concern, but I think to everybody's point, we can, we can rethink this area in the corner. We can do some modifications over here to address what we're talking about.
Okay.
Nothing that's game, game changer.
What's the comment there?
I say if that's the case, then you're only stacking for three cars.
No, he's got room to stack at the north side of the building too. He can still be in line. He can stack, it's technically stackable for ten right now, but he's saying three or more mobile. If they do a mobile conversation, they get to move ahead first. I see what you're saying, Jim. He would stack technically three on the.
Yeah, I guess I missed those three right there. Yeah, so you got those three that are against.
He would have technically about seven stackable.
Well, there's four along the building and, and where the curb is shown, there's no cars shown, but.
Right.
You, you know, you gotta lay out the curves and eighteen, twenty foot length.
Let me ask one question quickly.
Yeah.
When someone orders, is there a wait time to get things or they have to have a place where they wait for something to come out or they, they just, they're stacked in line and then they get their product and leave?
With Taco Bell, they're, they are, are pretty efficient. It's not like, uh, other fast food places where they have, pull ahead and wait for things.
Well, they do that at Culvers all the time. You pull ahead. That's the whole game. So I just, I'm asking now because I think you have enough stacking room myself and especially because of the service drive the way it is. If we can work out those service drive configurations, I don't see a problem.
Yes.
Do those folks that use the mobile app come in, they get in the regular line to go through the, the regular windows then, correct?
Once they get around the curb.
Right. They do have to go down through, okay.
They're expecting that line to move faster.
Right.
Yep.
If they call ahead.
I think they would.
If they call ahead, they get bumped to like the head of the line.
Personally, I would expect they're gonna put a menu board there eventually. And they'll both be those kind of ones. That's my.
Man, they'd have to amend the site plan.
They've got an algorithm and they tell us, we want so many feet between the window and the order board. Because their, their program says the order will be done by X amount of time and we want you to be there.
Okay. That's their agenda.
Yeah, that's their, that's our work.
Okay. I understand. I'm not real familiar with Taco Bell, but I'm learning.
The other thing I'd like to just touch on real quick, and we talked about this early on in the planning stages, was the, the berm that's out here, if you will. Um, not knowing that at the time it appears.
Where the safety path kind of is?
Well, yeah, yeah. I'll, we'll talk about that in a minute too. But that big berm that's out there, that was, it was, it was our understanding prior earlier meetings. That that was not a requirement, but more a function of the dirt was left over, let's put it there, it makes for a good berm done. We were told that we could remove it if we felt it.
The berm?
Yes.
Well, I don't know. That'd be a modification to Myers site plan, wouldn't it?
Not would they buy the property?
Would be, but that was, um.
That was mentioned at the pre-application meeting by Zach, that, uh, the ordinance, I believe, does not require a berm.
Oh, that it's not required? It's just there automatically because of the original Myers.
We didn't know if it was there because of extra dirt or what it was, or if it was to screen it from twenty-four. We don't know, but I don't think that there is a.
I was under the impression back in the day, they ran all the lines through that berm. Is there anything running through that berm that you know of? There's no utilities? Okay.
Cause that's. Water main, but it's not underneath the, it's, it's out in the right of way.
Okay. Cause I understood that berm was there for that reason, so it would hide a lot of it.
I don't know anything about the berm.
So are we gonna have, are we gonna have the potential of property with the berm, without a berm, with a berm?
Yes.
To the north and the south?
Yes.
Through the whole north, south run of Myers.
It wouldn't be just a vertical cut, it would be a gradual.
Well, we haven't seen it yet, so we, we have to, we have to address, I wanna get back on track here. We, we're, we're trying to get to a preliminary site plan approval and I think we've discussed a lot of things through Mr. Sharp and even through, uh, minor things through Zach. We have a few things from Mr. Schultz and also from the attorneys. Once these people get those letters. And once we all are on track and they've heard plenty tonight. Um, I think we can work something out to get this plan preliminary approved and let them work towards final site plan approval. It sounds like everybody's amenable to get things worked out to make this happen. So I think we're on track to try and do that. I mean, that's my opinion right now, speaking for myself. And, uh, I feel like maybe other planning commission members are here for that purpose too. So. If we don't have any more specific questions in trying to design this thing, I think we're not really the designers. We want them to design it and bring it back and see if we accept it. Uh, we should probably try to look for a motion to do preliminary site plan approval.
If there's no more questions, Mr. Chair, I can make a motion.
I would accept a motion.
It's gotta be under one minute long.
Well, we are working on reducing the length of these motions. A resolution for the preliminary site plan for fast food restaurants submitted by Greg. Latnizer, on behalf of the Great Lakes Taco Bell LLC for the property located nine hundred North Lapeer Road, section twenty-two of Oxford Township. Whereas applicant on behalf of Great Lakes Taco LLC pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford Township zoning ordinance. Submit an application for preliminary site plan on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, whereas the applicant submitted a fourteen page site plan on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. With a last revision date of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Prepared and stamped by REC Engineering, a licensed professional engineer. Whereas the applicant submitted a fourteen page site plan on September one, twenty twenty-two, with the last revision date of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Prepared and stamped by Joe's.
Yep. Wizanitis.
Joe Zawinaitis, a licensed professional engineer. Whereas the planning commission has received reports from planning consultant, our engineering consultant. Our Oxford Fire Department Chief and the Township Attorney. Whereas the site is located within the C two general commercial district. Whereas a fast food restaurant are permitted use in the restaurant outdoor patios are permitted access use in C two. General commercial district. And whereas the planning commission, as of its September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting reviewed, the preliminary. Site plan did not receive any public comment. Whereas the planning commission has authority to approve or deny site plans as provided in twelve point three B, section three. Planning Commission action and nineteen point four B site plan review of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the applicant of a preliminary site plan allows the applicant to submit a final site plan. Whereas the planning commission grants a waiver for information missing from the preliminary site plan. And allows, uh, as allowed in twelve point three B two, information required by the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission. Finds a preliminary site plan meets or would meet with conditions noted in the, in the resolution. The standard of twelve point oh five A through twelve point oh five O of the zoning ordinance site plan approval standards. Now therefore be resolved that the planning commission by a majority vote a duly noted. Regular meeting held the twenty-second day of September twenty-two approves. The preliminary site plan for Taco Bell for a fast food restaurant for property located at nine hundred North Lapeer, section twenty-two. Of Oxford Township, parcel number ID zero four two 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 zero 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 two zero. Subject to the conditions listed below. Comments identified in the consultant and agency reviews shall be addressed in the final site plan. And the preliminary site plan approved shall expire and be of no effect after three hundred and sixty-five days following this approval.
I need support of a motion if we have it for discussion.
I'll support.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Noel and, and lengthy motion at that, we think, but she said to try to shorten it up. And supported by Mr. Spiz for preliminary site plan approval for the applicant Great Lakes Taco LLC. Um, we're all aware of what I believe is necessary to put this thing in motion to move it forward. I tried to pull up the one view that shows how part of the. I tried to pull up the one view that shows how part of the actual berm could be removed and where the side uh, safety path could go. So everybody has an understanding if it comes back with or without a berm. Uh, it was actually proposed that way in the preliminary site plan. We just didn't get to those comments yet. So, um, is there any other discussion from the planning commission members? Well, seeing none, Susan, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Bailey?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Yes. It's unanimous. You have a preliminary site plan approval and I'll, we can hopefully move together and get this thing done.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is uh, commissions and commu- excuse me, communications and committee reports. I don't, I don't think we still have anything from the economic development committee, do we?
We do not.
Ordinance review committee, uh, geez, old piece. We, we've been working on so much stuff lately, it's almost mind-boggling. And we're trying to get to our finalization on the non-residential PUD. Which we're, we went through a lot of it, again, just recently, uh, last Thursday. Uh, we're moving in the right direction on a couple other issues. We're cleaning up some of the things that are moving along. Uh, finally got some things through the township board, which we're happy about. It took us for months, you know, several months to get there. And I think once we get this uh, other issue of PUD ordinance modified and amended. It's gonna help us to bring development into the township in a different way that they know they can work with the PUD to establish agreements back and forth. Between us and the petitioners to put product together in the township. So I think we have the right direction going and what we're doing with the, the uh, the ORC stuff. Uh, we have several meetings yet to come up in the future to try and bring even, even more forward. Uh, we've knocked out a pretty good list, don't you think, John, so far? And Mr. Turner's involved in this too.
Had a full, full year.
And so we're moving in the right direction, so I think we're doing well. Um, do we have any comments from any, uh, Mr. Michelle is not here tonight, so we don't have anything from Carlisle Wartman. What about you, Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, just give you a couple of quick updates. Uh, Manito Hills, they're finally gonna start construction on that thing. Yeah, I think they've been sitting out there for a while.
Wow, no trees for a while too. Lot of dirt.
A different site out there.
Yeah.
Um, they're trying to coordinate their pre-construction meeting, um, but they'll be getting the infrastructure improvements on that probably within the next couple of weeks.
So you know who the underground people are and everything?
I believe it's gonna be Superior Estuary.
Superior?
They had a contractor and supposedly they lost that contractor or something and, uh.
So they went with Superior?
So, yeah, it's supposed to be Superior.
Okay.
They've been trying to get everything together to start construction on that.
From my past, I think we've had pretty good luck with Superior.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so I'm, that's good.
Yep, they were the little bidder on a recent uh, water main project in Oxford Township here on East Rainer Road. So when that project kicks off, then they'll be doing that one as well. Um, another Clearview project, Sanctuary Hills. Um, I had heard that they closed on that property. I've been getting a couple of phone calls on that thing too, so they're. That'll probably be coming back around again for everybody to see, um, in the next couple of months.
We just don't know when, right?
They received their preliminary site plan. Yeah, so they'll be coming back for their final site plan. They went to the road commission and had their, uh. They did their traffic study and had that uh, approved by the road commissioner. So I imagine they'll be coming in pretty soon for their final site plan on that. Um, obviously we've got lots of stuff happening with marijuana. You guys are gonna be seeing those coming through over the next few weeks.
We have almost the next three meeting dates in regarding uh, marijuana issues, yes.
So those three sites, yep, they keep coming back with their finals and so forth, so, uh, we've been having a lot of what we call pre-application meetings too. I mean, there's a lot of other ones. Another one, um, again, just trying to double back on some of my earlier comments about the amended Meyer. Site plan. There's another applicant, um, that is, is looking at taking up another chunk of the existing Meyer parking lot. For another type of establishment like this. Um, again.
I don't know, we're gonna have much parking space left if we keep going.
Thinking about.
All these pot shops, we need the munchie shops too.
Something to start thinking about anyway.
Hey, munchies here.
And then, um, Mr. Curtis, Supervisor Curtis was up in Lansing, I believe, last. Thursday. Um, discussing, Pete probably knows more about it, you know, Pete was there as well. Um, but basically talking about the Beaumont Hospital up there and trying to promote that. I believe they spoke under public comment during that time to try to move that along, but.
Other facility in Oxford that's.
McLaren.
McLaren.
What about that?
I was just, do you know anything about that?
About the McLaren?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they are coming in for a pre-application meeting as well to. Look at doing an expansion to McLaren, uh, right there by the Goddard School Gateway Drive in there, so. So a lot of things happening that are coming up, so.
I think reality of it is, from what I heard, is some properties have been purchased by certain people. And because of those purchases, and one of them was Jim Gay's piece, that we never did rezone. We wanted to keep it for the purpose of the McLaren addition. They would build that building new and then tear the other building down. Now, that just all came out through conversation because they actually closed on that property. They purchased it. The other Cossack piece, which the Cossack family, the attorney group has owned that other piece where, where Beaumont was trying to go. South of Market Street over there. I heard there might be closure on that property from purchase too. So now we could have two facilities trying to look at us at the same time, which would be kind of unique. But hey, I'm all, I'm for competition.
Yeah, so Mr. Curtis was up in Lansing along with Pete and I don't know who else went up there.
I wasn't in Lansing, but I heard other birds talking.
They were, uh, you know, tripping with, who, who were you in front of? Basically trying to get the CON, you know, get that moved along. And I think they were on public comment. But they've got it to a point now where they're gonna be an agenda item to try to helpfully move that thing along, so. That could be a big one too. So lots happening here. Lots happening. I think you guys are gonna be busy.
Sounds good. I think we're ready for adjournment. So move. Okay. Thank you. It's uh, five minutes eight.